At this time, we'll call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome out everyone here this evening. The, as was the case with our last regular city council meeting, this one is, is being conducted under the emergency actions. So we are, it'd be broadcast from the Emergency Operations Center, which is located at the Merritt Center in Marshall. City council members are, are connected by Zoom. So when we get to that point, we'll do a roll call vote. We do have public hearings this evening and members of the public will be in an adjacent room. And Director Public Safety Jim Marshall is kind of managing that room. So there will be opportunities for, for individuals if they are attending the public hearing to attend it in that room and then be viewed through the technology that's available in that room. Again, this will be connected similar to, to our meeting, our last meeting, the regular meeting that we had. We will have our votes that will be taken by roll call vote, voice vote. The, so with that, I'll call on the city clerk to take the role of the city council.
Mayor Burns?
Present.
Craig Schaefer?
Present.
Stephen Meister? Glenn Bearcooler?
Present.
John De Kramer?
Present.
Russ Lebat?
Present.
James Lizinski?
Present.
And we, we do have a quorum at the meeting. I believe Steve Meister, Councilmember Meister, will be joining us as we, during the meeting. And we'll announce that when he does join. So we have an agenda before us. Are there any items to add or delete from that agenda? If not, we're operating under that agenda. The, the next item then would be to consider the approval of the minutes of our, we had a special meeting that was held on March 20th, 2020. And we also had a regular meeting that was held on March 24th. So the council does have the minutes of both of those meetings. Are there any corrections to note? If not, is there a motion to approve both of those agenda items?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ to approve the minutes of the special meeting of March 20th and the regular meeting on March 24th. I'll call on the city clerk to take the vote.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lizinski?
Yes.
And then the motion does pass. We'll move then to the public hearing. The, this is a public hearing on South First Street. This is a continuation of the public hearing that was actually called to order. The March 24th meeting and then opened, there was presentation and then continued until tonight's meeting also. So once again, I'll call on Jason Anderson, our City Engineer Director of Public Works, to conduct this continued public hearing. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully everyone can hear me all right. This project consists of the reconstruction of South First Street, generally between Southview Drive and George Street. Water, sanitary sewer and storm sewer catch basins are proposed to be replaced with this project. We're also proposing sidewalk along the west side of the street. And that would make a connection between existing sidewalk on Southview Drive and near George Street, about 215 feet north of George Street. We did hold an informational meeting at Marshall Municipal Utilities on March 12th. Property owners were notified of that. As the mayor mentioned, we've, we held the hearing on the 24th and we've continued it till today. In order for this project to proceed, I probably should mention that we need a super majority vote from our council. The engineer's estimate for this project is $780,000 when you add in contingency and engineering costs. Near million dollar project. This project would be paid for by MMU Waste Water Department, Surface Water Management Utility and the city marshal and its residents through the special assessment process. I entertain any questions.
And we'd also note for the record that the, there has been a written input from property owners as part of this public hearing. So the council has received that. We'll also note for the record of Steve Meister is, has joined the meeting.
Great. One other thing I should note that we discussed at the last meeting is that the road is proposed to be narrowed from 40 feet back of curb to back of curb to 36 feet. So we are proposing sidewalk on the west side at this point and a slight road narrowing to keep costs more affordable for our residents and the city marshal long term.
We'll open up for any additional public comment as part of this public hearing. You see, there is no one in the adjacent room. Input from the council or staff as part of the public hearing. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a clarification question for Annette and Jason. The super majority for ordering the project is four fifths. However, for bonding, it would be two thirds. Just want to confirm that.
I believe that's correct, Annette.
Yes, that's correct. For ordering the improvement, we would have to have six members affirm, affirm the vote. And then for the bonding side, it's two thirds of the members present.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay. Part of the public hearing, input from council?
Mr. Mayor, Russ Lebat, I thank Jason for his information on, on the specs of the projects. And again, that was similar to Fourth Street. I'm not opposed to the project, but I am opposed to the specs. I did too attend the informational meeting on March 12th with the residents. I would say 100% of the residents that were in attendance were opposed to two things. One was the narrowing of the street and the other one was the sidewalks. Since that meeting, I've had numerous conversations with some of those residents in that area. I've walked down that street numerous times. I've talked to people. They have called me. They have sent me emails. I've asked every one of them. I said, if the project were to proceed, would you be in favor of addressing the project, taking care of the project, the infrastructure underneath the ground? 100% of them said yes. My second and third question was, do they, are they in favor of narrowing the street and putting the sidewalks in? 100% of that response was no. They don't feel it's necessary to do either one. They think the cost saving on the narrowing of the street at $35,000 or roughly $40,000 is not worth it. In fact, I had one resident said they counted the cars parked on the street numerous times. And it's between 15 and 18 cars parked on the street from the, in the, in the project area. At any given time, right now, she, they said, this person said that they're taking turns when they meet cars. So if we narrow up the street, I don't think it's, it's worthwhile cause. I think that we've got a problem, not a problem, but we've got a situation going north and going south. That the street is 40 feet wide. I see no reason why with this, this street has to be narrowed to 36 feet. I, I realize it's a cost saving, but I think we're going to be saving money if we don't put in sidewalks and we don't narrow the street as well. So, but they're, again, they're, they're not opposed to, for the infrastructure because we all know that area has been hit with some sewer backup and water backup and things like that. So I think they're, again, 100% of those, of those residents are in favor of that. I did have one, one person call me last night and he lives on the corner of, I believe, Doni, or no, excuse me, Gray Place and First Street. And he said, since the South First Street was extended to the south, he said, that's kind of up on a hill and, and the high point of that street, I think Jason, is Donita and South First. So all the water from that area, from Donita, all the way coming down and going north, flowing north on South First Street goes into either Southview Drive or goes further on down. He said it comes all the way down to his place on Gray Place. He has had numerous times water sitting in his backyard, in his front yard. He's had water in his basement. He's just wondering if something, some additional drainage can be put in there. So he's, he realizes he's at a low spot and he wants to know if there's some additional drainage that could be put in when we redo this street. So, and again, I'm not opposed to the project. I'm opposed to the specs. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Russ. Jason, a couple of questions in there if you want to respond or?
Sure. I'll, I'll agree with Councilman Lebat that the majority of the input that we're receiving from the neighborhood is related to the sidewalks and it is related to the width of the street. So I'll agree with him that that is the input that, that I've been hearing as well. It doesn't change staff's recommendation, but that is the input. As far as the drainage goes, we are proposing to put in larger inlets at all locations along the project corridor. We think that'll have a substantial improvement to drainage. It's not going to solve all problems, but it's certainly going to help. They've got very small inlets for pretty large drain areas and we're going to try to address that in that manner. As far as water coming from Donita and draining down into their area, while I'm, I won't say right here that it's not possible. I'm not sure what the topography is exactly there. I would say that there are inlets along the way that should be intercepting that water before it gets to their area. But we will try to address drainage by putting in larger inlets. And we are going to try to address the sewer system and make it more robust by making some lift station improvements up at First and De Shepherd, in addition to some sewer pipe improvements between Southview and George.
Hey, thank you, Jason. Other input as part of the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Meister. Yes, so I would agree with Councilmember Lebat. Everything that I've heard is exactly the same thing. It's work for the infrastructure, but based upon the current traffic patterns, absolutely no need to decrease the width. That'll cause more problems with safety and no need for the sidewalks. So I would be in favor of the project without, with those modifications.
Other input from the council as part of the public hearing?
Mayor, John De Kramer?
Yes, John.
I guess a, a couple of things on this. One, we seem to go through this on most every project. And unfortunately, we put our engineering department in kind of a, a tough spot where, you know, they're following policy and procedures and putting in the sidewalks, which was an ordinance put in a while back. You know, I think it's a little unfortunate because we seem to upset people all the way through in doing this process. For one, I'd like to have at some point readdress that ordinance or take a look at that. Perhaps do what we have been doing for the most part in regards to sidewalks for sure is if they existed, they go in. If they're not there, they don't go in. But in new additions and new roads, we put in sidewalks. So we're adding to the sidewalks, but not in areas that historically have not had sidewalks. Now, in regards to the width of the road, may have had some neighbors think I'm crazy, but I was out, went out and measured the width of G Street. Now, this is a 31 foot road. And in the one block area here, we typically have seven, eight cars sitting there. So it's a little narrower yet than what the First Street is. Yes, we at times have to take turns going through. In my mind, that's not all that bad. It definitely slows the traffic down in a residential area. And this is not, you know, granted, G Street is not a major through street. I can't really say for sure. I don't think First Street is really that much of a through street. But I do think the points that engineering made at the last meeting that we're doing this, one for cost savings and two for savings of resources, petroleum, CO2, all the good things that we hear about. This is a case where we're trying to do that in, in a good stewardship manner. So I, I'm more inclined on the narrower streets. But I would say that in this case, sidewalks, if they have them, leave them. If they don't, don't put them in and we need to address that. So engineering doesn't have to go through this and basically upset residents in just about every project. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, John. Other input as part of the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, Russ, again, John, I totally agree with you on the, on the sidewalks. And I think just a point of clarification is if it's my understanding correctly, on new developments, the ordinance goes into effect. On existing developments such as First Street or Fourth Street, it's the policy. It's not an ordinance. Is that correct? I think that's the way somebody explained it to me, that we have a policy in place for the sidewalks on, on reconstruction. But when it's total new construction, then the ordinance goes into effect. And that's the way I understood it.
That is correct.
My other question is, and again, going back to the narrowing, and I forgot to bring this up because, you know, our snowplow drivers do a great job, but sometimes they don't get all the way up to the curb and they probably leave a foot, maybe a foot and a half from the curb on each side of the street. So you're taking, you know, in four to five to six months out of the year, our snow is sitting away from the curb and then you're narrowing the street. So then you're down to probably a 30, 31, 32 foot street. So take that into consideration as well. And I totally agree with you. I think that we should take, you know, take a fresh look at our ordinance on the sidewalks. And we, so we don't have to go through this with our engineering staff. So that's my, just my thoughts. Thank you.
Other input as part of the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Craig.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I can see the, the points on this. And I, I mean, I, I favor for a lot of reasons the 36 feet. I think at some point in time, we need to make some decisions. We can solve some of the snow removal with snow emergency or other issues, other items. But one of the things is the sidewalks. And this has kind of been a point of contention for me as long as I've been on council. And since we did the, the release on A Street and kind of opened up Pandora's Box about the difference between policy and ordinance and, and whether we're a pedestrian friendly community or not. And, and one of the things, and, and I understand the residents' points and, and, but I also think that it's kind of sad when we put our, our pedestrians out in the street versus on a sidewalk in these parts of town. Maybe not so much of a problem on First Street as some of the other streets. But if we're going to address the sidewalk issue, I think we should also at the same time then take them off of the assessment and put them on to the total project, you know, project cost and include them just like we do on part of the street and have it that way rather than putting them in with the argument about that the residents are paying almost for the entirety of the sidewalk. At that point in time, let's, let's put them in into the total project cost and break them out that way to kind of take that point out of the contentious piece of the proposals.
Jason, do you want to clarify that?
That, that essentially is how we assess the sidewalks. They are a part of the street and curb and gutter costs and assessed to the entire project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Glenn.
I have a question for Jason. Now, in this particular case, we have sidewalks and they go for a way and then they stop and then they start up again. Do we have many other streets in town where we have the same problem? Where we have sidewalks for a while and then we don't, and then we do again. Are, are we going to run into this situation and a number of other streets in town?
Yeah, I can't think of any specific examples, but I'm, the answer is almost assuredly yes.
And my concern on this is that I'd, I'd like to see if we're going to have sidewalks, we have it the entire way and not breaks in the sidewalk where you're on a sidewalk for a while, then you gotta go in the street and then back on the sidewalk again. I don't think that's a good situation.
Thank you, Glenn. Any other input as part of the public hearing?
Jim Lizinski here.
Yes, Jim.
I, I agree with Glenn on that one. We have, and, and I understand sidewalks are contentious. We have sidewalks halfway down First Street. So here it makes a lot of sense to connect that sidewalk to Southview Street and connect that, the, the system there. And at the, you know, we keep talking about safety, make the street wider for safety. Well, safety wise, we want to get our kids off the street. We don't want our five, six, seven year old kids riding their bikes on the street. Is safety such a big issue? So, and I, I'll give up sidewalks on both sides, but I really think this would be a good spot to connect our sidewalk into the whole system there. So that's my input. Thank you.
Any other input as part of the public hearing?
May I piggyback on the safety comment?
Jason?
You know, oftentimes it seems counterintuitive, but a road narrowing is oftentimes a safety improvement in a neighborhood, specifically a residential neighborhood. When the road is too wide, you as a driver feel very comfortable going faster than you should be going. You feel very comfortable going 36, 37, 38 miles per hour or more. I see it in my neighborhood. I see it in a lot of neighborhoods in Marshall. So I just want to point out that feeling a little restricted and feeling like you might have to go around some cars every once in a while keeps you from going too fast in a neighborhood, especially when you don't have sidewalk and you've got people sharing the road.
Thank you. And the, on the question of Russ, on the interruption, or Glenn, actually, you had the question on the sidewalk interruptions. On the policy that we went through in the late 1980s, that policy addressed the new additions that where they would be required by ordinance. And it also addressed the current existing at that time sidewalks. And then set up connectivity routes where sidewalks were put in because they were connectors. And that was funded, not assessed, that was funded out of the 429 revolving account. So then that was when streets like Southview and Saratoga and other streets like that connected, had sidewalks installed to connect the newer additions to the older additions that had sidewalks. Other input as part of the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one other thing. I was looking through my notes. At that informational meeting again on March 12th, I did have two residents tell me point blank. She says, I can't afford it. And I, and I tried to explain her, explain to them that the maximum would be $5,700. And she said, I can't afford that at all. And I said, it would be on your taxes. You could pay it over length of time. And she was adamant that she said, I just can't afford it. So I wanted to make that pinpoint known as well. Thank you.
Any other input as part of the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, this is Dr. Meister again. So piggybacking on Jason's comment about speed, he is absolutely right. The studies do show that when you narrow things, traffic automatically slows down. When they were talking about changes to Highway 23, the state of Minnesota came and demonstrated that through multiple examples, which were data driven. And so on that point, narrowing the street does slow traffic down. There's no question.
Mayor, John De Kramer?
John?
Okay, a couple of comments too on that. I can definitely attest to the fact that, you know, the narrower street on G Street slows people down. It's the rare exception to have someone cruise through here at the, the 30 miles an hour. It's generally much slower than that. And again, you know, quite often taking times, taking turns and doing that. Just a, a comment back on Russ's comment, just a reminder to the public that there are means out there, there are conditions within our ordinances that if an individual is in a position where certain assessments cannot be paid, we do have a procedure within our ordinance to handle that. So just a reminder of that to the public. And, you know, somebody is interested in that, probably the best bet is check back with Kyle to Kyle Box and find out what the situation is and what's required.
Thank you, John. Any other input as part of the public hearing? If not, there's been good input as part of this public hearing. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Jim Lizinski second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to close the public hearing. Discussion on the motion. If not, we'll, I'll call on city clerk to take the vote by roll call.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Stephen Meister?
Yay.
Glenn Bearcooler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lizinski?
Yes.
The motion does pass. The public hearing is closed. We'll now consider the resolution that would order the improvement and preparation of the plans. Questions about that resolution? If not, is there a motion?
I would make the motion to approve the plans with the exception of keeping the road, keep the sidewalk on the west side and the road at 40 feet.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig for the resolution. With the change in the resolution is the width of the road remains at 40 feet sidewalk on the west side. Discussion on that motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Steve.
On the current ordinance on the sidewalks, you had made a reference to there's a policy and there's an ordinance. For clarification, how would that fall into line with this particular project? Because there is a partial sidewalk. Does the, does that fall into the ordinance then or does that fall into the policy?
It would not, and you can clarify this, but the policy or the ordinance would be applicable to new platted developments.
I think it falls more under the policy than it does under the ordinance.
Right, I agree. I think, I think the language that we're referring to, and I don't have it pulled up, but I believe it's in the subdivision ordinance. So that would be for platted subdivisions. The only comment I would add to keeping the road at 40 feet and putting sidewalk on the west side is that might either jeopardize trees or jeopardize boulevard space between the curb and the sidewalk. I just want to make that known. There's a lot of mature trees in the neighborhood. And that was another thing to consider in the width of the road was to make sure that we can get a five foot boulevard, give or take, and save a lot of trees. So we'll be happy to review that if that's the recommendation and try to do what we can. It just may cause the sidewalk to be a little closer to the curb.
I guess that was going to be my question as well, Jason, if that was going to be affected by trees because you're effectively losing several feet where you were planning on putting a sidewalk.
Yes, there's a lot of trees in that neighborhood that are planted on City Right of Way, coincidentally about exactly where you would really like to put the sidewalk. But knowing that and knowing that we can't go in there and bulldoze 12 mature trees, we plan to shift the curb line on the one, the west side of the road by four feet in. So only on the west side, the curb moves. And then that gives us more space to move the sidewalk towards the street while still maintaining a good amount of boulevard space for snow storage.
Other discussion? Yes, Jim.
Jim, Jason, and I'm trying to compromise with the, with the owners there because they want the wider street. Can we make it, and thinking out in Parkway, I think the boulevard's narrower than that. So it is possible to leave those trees and squeeze that sidewalk in with the narrow boulevard, correct?
I'm quite sure we can do it, yes. I just want to point out that it'll, it'll leave a little less room. And then when the snowplows come through, we deposit harder to move snow on the sidewalk and that'll generally makes people upset. So we kind of try to keep the sidewalk, a five foot minimum is our target. Yes, we go smaller. Saratoga, for example, we were three, three and a half feet. It's not our ideal situation if we can help it. But I, so I just want that to be known, you know, a four foot street narrowing might be noticed by a few, but it's, it's not going to be, it's not going to jump out at you and say, wow, this road got so tight. You know, it's, it's just, it's a, it's a minor narrowing to kind of make room for the sidewalk as well and save money. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. We will make it work. I just want you to know that there might be an unintended consequence there.
Jim, did that?
And I understand.
Question? Go ahead.
Jim here, can I say, I understand that, Jason. And I, like I said, I'm just trying to work on a compromise that seems to work well and connect that neighborhood, those, connect that sidewalk. So I, I, I think. and connect that neighborhood, those, connect that sidewalk. So I, I, I think that works well.
Uh, Jason, uh, question, uh, do we, don't we have, uh, varying widths of the road already on First Street? Could you refresh my memory on that?
Yeah, you're testing mine, but I think it's, uh, it varies by maybe one to two feet. You know, I think it goes from thirty-eight and a half to forty and a half, somewhere in there, from back of curb to back of curb. It does vary some.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, with, with all due respect to my fellow council members, and I know that's why we run for these positions and get paid the big dollars. But again, I just want to remind them that a hundred percent of the residents that I spoke with that have contacted me were in favor of the infr- infrastructure, but not in favor of the width narrowing and the sidewalks. So please take that into consideration for the residents in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Other discussion on the motion?
I just have a quick question. Um,
Yes, Glenn.
Set, the sidewalks further north, uh, you know, again, the directions are different here, but, uh, I think it's north right of that. Um, how close are they to the road? Are, is, is it, are they going to be the same distance from the sidewalk to the road in the part that's finished as what you're proposing at the bottom?
That's a good question. Um, I'm going to pull up a map and get you a rough number right now. I'm not aware.
So Glenn, uh, Jason's going to, uh, pull up the aerial on that and, and so you'll have a answer to that question when he gets the, that answer. So in the meantime, any other discussion on the motion? Uh, Jason, how are you coming?
No pressure.
I have my Google Earth up here, Jason, too, and I, I think that, that it's going to be the, the new sidewalk would be closer, just from what I can see here.
Mine was right there, but it just froze, so.
Okay.
Just a moment.
The tree, the tree consideration is, is, I mean, I that, that is significant and it does, you know, it, that, that is a serious effect and I, I don't take that lightly either. I, I'm looking at that also on Google Earth and it is pretty significant.
What kind of, what kind of trees are those, do we think?
I'm not sure.
Because if, if they're elms, they're on a limited life expectancy anyway, and so that may change.
But you'd also say the same thing about ash trees too, so.
Right, right.
I would say that our sidewalk will be closer to the curb than the sidewalk that's in place today. That sidewalk looks like it's much closer to the property line. It's still a little further off the property line than we would normally put it. Um, understanding that this aerial isn't accurate, not survey grade, but I would say that our sidewalk will be closer to the curb than is shown here today for the rest of the neighborhood.
And Jason, is the width, the new width of the sidewalk or the sidewalks that you're planning and putting in, are those wider than the old sidewalks?
We, on all of our projects, we've been putting in and proposing to put in five foot sidewalks. In these neighborhoods, they're typically four.
Um, any other discussion on the motion? From my part, um, when this does come to a vote, um, I'm in favor of the project, um, but I'm not in favor of leaving the street at forty feet if that is going to be widened. Because I, I think the very point Jason, you were making about narrowing up the boulevard and storage area for snow, that is going to cause this problem down the road. But I do see, uh, for the re- fiscal responsibility of the city, not only for the construction cost, but the ongoing maintenance, that the thirty-six foot, uh, really is probably the best policy, uh, decision that we would make. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll bring it to a vote. I'll call on Kyle. And again, the, uh, motion is for the resolution ordering the improvement, preparation of planned sidewalks on the west forty foot street. Kyle, would you take the vote? No.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Stephen Meister?
No.
Glenn Bearcooler?
Yes.
No.
Russ Lebat?
No.
Jim Mazinski? Jim Mazinski? Yes?
Do you guys hear me? Now we can.
Now we can.
Yes.
Okay. Kyle wants to vote, Kelly?
Uh, it is three eight, four nine.
So that, that motion does not pass. I will entertain an alternate motion.
This is John De Kramer. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, reduce the width of the road to the thirty-six feet as planned and leave the sidewalks where there are sidewalks and not add in new sidewalk.
Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? And is there a second to that motion? So having called for a second three times, not receiving a second, that motion dies for lack of a second. Is there, uh, an alternate motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make
I would make.
That we leave the street as forty feet and we do not put sidewalks on the, on the west side.
Motion by Russ, is there a second to that motion?
I could second that.
Seconded by Steve. Discussion on the motion. Is discussion, any other discussion on the motion? If not, uh, call for a vote, Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
No.
Craig Schaefer?
No.
Stephen Meister?
Yay.
Glenn Bearcooler?
No.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Mazinski? Jim Mazinski?
No. No. Hello?
Yes, we are due, yes. So that motion does not pass. So is there an alternate motion?
I would make an ultimate motion of the road at thirty-six feet with sidewalks on the west side.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Glenn. Discussion. If not, we'll vote on the motion. Everyone understands the motion is for the resolution, thirty-six feet sidewalk on the west. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Stephen Meister?
No.
Glenn Bearcooler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
No.
Jim Mazinski?
Yes.
That motion is five to two, clarifying the earlier discussion that doesn't meet the threshold of the or Dennis, you can clarify that.
Right, that does not pass, does not meet the four fifths.
So we don't, do not have four fifths. I think we've exhausted most of the, um, alternatives here, so. Any further discussion from the council?
So I think what happens here is that, you know, Russ and I, that's our, um, ward. And so this is where we have to do what's best for the city, I think. Um, and when we look at the city versus what we look for in the individual wards, um, I think we have to discern what that means. So I think what we need to do is, uh, I would propose that we table this and for, until the next meeting, um, as much of a pain in the, uh, rear as it is, uh, ask Jason to come back with maybe an alternative plan if there are any. Um, the only thing that I would say is thirty-six feet, uh, with no sidewalk and make that the compromise. I guess I'd make that as a motion, thirty-six feet to no, no sidewalk.
Okay, so just to clarify, Steve, you're, you're not, you're
I'm not going to table, no.
Okay.
No. Yeah, I would say thirty-six feet as the compromise and no sidewalk.
Is there a second?
That way it's compromised.
I'll second that.
Motion by Steve seconded by Craig. Now, discussion on that motion?
So the reason that I'm making that motion is that we, nobody gets exactly what they want, but we have, we have to fix the infrastructure. There is no question about that. The road has to be fixed. If we build the road at thirty-six feet, yeah, we're not happy in that neighborhood. Um, but I think that that is the prudent, uh, cost effective, uh, aspect for the city going forward. I think the sidewalk issue again, um, that's where the compromise comes in. So that's why I'm making the motion and that's why I'll vote in favor of the motion.
And the reason that I support that is that if we're going to put the kids on the street, it's the slower traffic. I know there's the question of snow removal, but there again, not having a narrowed boulevard with a sidewalk in place. Hopefully that as the city does the removal, um, they'll be able to go to the curb, not worried about refilling a sidewalk. So, um, you know, that's going to be something when there's snow to be moved that the neighbors will need to consider having as best they can their vehicles off the street, and I'm sure they do that anyway. But, um, you know, I guess with slower traffic, if we're going to put kids on the street, I'd rather duel with the slowest possible motor traffic on that street as possible.
Other discussion on the motion?
Um, Jim Mazinski here, and I guess it's frustrating to me as somebody who walks that our sidewalks keep getting taken out of these projects, yet we have all these bike paths for our bikers. So I will not be supporting the motion because we talked about safety, yet we keep putting our kids on streets. That makes zero sense to me. So I, I will not support the motion with no sidewalks. Thank you.
Uh, this is Glenn Bearcooler, and, uh, I'm concerned about the precedent we would set here. If we're not going to require sidewalks here, when are we ever going to require them in other subdivisions or other areas of town?
Other discussion on the motion? The only other point I would make, given the, um, um, at this time, we're not there, so we don't know the species of the trees, if they are ash or if they aren't ash. The, um, you know, that would be the, a reason for, um, perhaps delaying the sidewalk portion of it because if some of those trees may have to be removed if they do succumb to Emerald Aspor in the next few years, um, if that would happen, and that's, uh, unknown. But that would change your location of a sidewalk, so.
Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate in, in a situation like this? Because I know one of our pushes is to take sidewalks out of the, the, out of the equation here in the debate as far as how they're funded and make sidewalks ad valorem. Could we put that in that at a point in time, there's no sidewalks on a thirty-six foot street, but at some point in time, I'm, if the situation rolls based on tree disease that that boulevard opened up, we could come in after the fact and add sidewalks?
I don't, you know, I think that's a suggestion. It's probably not something we could bind future council on, but, so.
Because I too, I too like Jim and Glenn. I, I really struggle when we push for sidewalks and I, I, I very much enjoy the sidewalks in our neighborhood. Granted, we've got a wide street, but I'd really prefer to slow the traffic down. But it's a major feeder and that's where we live. But, um, you know, I, I totally support the sidewalk piece. I think that really is important. And, and I've tried to battle and fight for it, but I also understand the circumstance in this neighborhood. And the policies don't always fit as nice in some areas as they do in others. And I, I understand that and I understand the concern of the, of the neighborhood too. But I also understand the benefit. I enjoy walking. My wife and I enjoy walking and it's hard to do if there's not sidewalks.
Jason, I'm going to ask you the question if the, um, you know, again, we have a motion on the table and, and should that motion, um, not pass? The, um, and if the earlier discussion of tabling this, uh, bringing this back up at, at the next regular council meeting, given the construction season, is it, is still a, a buildable project this construction season with a delay of two weeks again?
That's a good question. Um, naturally, the more we push this back, yeah, the later award gets. I don't remember our timeline. I think we were already looking at a late May, early June award of the project. So that puts a project start into June. Um, if you delay another council meeting, you put the project start into late June, maybe early July. I think that it's still buildable and constructible if you find a contractor ready to do the work. I think the later you get in being the project, the more ready you need to be to turn down a bit if you don't like the numbers.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion?
Again, just a, a question back to Jason, do we have bike lanes on this road?
No, we do not.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the motion? And the motion on the ta- table is for the resolution, uh, thirty-six foot with no sidewalk. Was there other discussion? Jim, did I hear you? Any other discussion on the motion? If there's no other discussion on the motion, I'll ask Kyle to, uh, take the roll call vote.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Stephen Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
No.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
No.
Jim Mazinski?
No.
That motion also does not pass. Is there a desire from the council to, uh, uh, put this on the next regular council meeting for discussion?
I would, uh, make a motion to table this, uh, discussion until the next council meeting.
Motion by John, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Steve. Discussion. I think the previous discussion was in the meantime, if there's any, uh, alternatives that can be, um, come up with on this project that to make it palatable, the, uh, for support, uh, as well as any other additional information like the species of the trees that are there in the location.
Sure, yeah, we can do that. I think what I would go back with is that tree information, Mayor. And then, um, maybe a couple of different alternatives with street widths and sidewalk or no sidewalk and what that mayor may not do to the trees that are there and how we can possibly fit it in. I just, we can come with some answers.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Stephen Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Mazinski?
Yes.
So that motion passed, so. Um, thank you for the discussion. We'll move then to agenda item number five. Um, this would be to consider the resolution approving a tax, property tax abatement, finance certain public improvements uh, in the city. Annette, do you have this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the first, um, public hearing that we're looking at is a tax abatement bond to finance the Freedom Park bathroom. Um, that council approved back on March tenth. Um, basically what the tax abatement is doing is it's taking, um, a bunch of parcels that will be, um, in the eyes of the law, um, increased in value, um, because of the addition that the city will be making. Um, and so this public hearing will be identifying those, um, parcels that are affected by there, um, giving us the authority to fund the project. Um, if there's any questions, I'll try and answer them the best of my ability. There's any questions, I'll try and answer them the best of my ability.
Thank you, Annette. Questions?
Jim Lozinski here. Quick question, when we did the bathroom over in Liberty Park, that one was not a tax abatement, or Justice Park, neither of those two were tax abatement, so why is this one being tax abatement? I'll listen.
I believe the last one we did, we didn't bond for it, we had cash on hand to be able to finance for. I believe in, I think it was Independence Park is the last one that I can remember at the top of my head that we did an abatement for. And I don't think it was a bathroom, I think that might have been a parking lot, but this is the only way to finance this type of project, so I can't speak to the two at the top of my head, but I know last year when we did that one, we had cash to finance it.
Annette, you can.
Well, how did we pay for Justice Park? How did we pay for the bathroom that was just completed in Justice Park?
That one was, we had cash on hand.
So both Liberty Park and Justice Park, we had cash on hand then?
I'm trying to remember which one was done last year.
Liberty Park was done last year, and Justice Park would have been done two years ago, I believe.
I would, I would have to go back and look to see how we funded that one. At the top of my head, I don't know that information.
Okay, thanks, Annette.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree with Councilman Lozinski. I, I don't believe we should be bonding for ten years to pay for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I think we should be able to find the money in our budget to pay cash for this.
And this one would be paid back on a maximum of six years. And the reason that we're adding this to the current bonding project is, interest rates are so low, and with the volatility of kind of the financial situation that we could be seeing in the next six to twelve months, I, I just, I would feel more comfortable having the cash from the bonding versus trying to dip into reserves and replenish that when we might need to use it for other purposes later, depending on if property tax deadlines get extended, you know, we, we could be in a situation where we don't have the funds coming in for normal operations, and so that, that's kind of why we decided, or at least that's why my recommendation is to just include this with the overall bonding of everything else.
And Annette, I respect your opinion, but if that's the case, and none of us know exactly what's gonna happen with the economy in the next three to six to twelve months, but you know, and I know we approved this, and I know that that's what the council wishes, but maybe we, maybe we hold off on this until we can afford to pay for it.
Other discussion?
Yeah, I agree, yeah, I agree with Councilmember Lebat, you know, if, if Annette is worried about this from the city's standpoint, imagine what the taxpayers are, their level of concern is.
And Sharon, I don't know what that looks like then, if, you can go ahead.
Well, I've stated from the beginning, and I will continue to state this, that reduction in revenue, whether that be property tax delinquents to reduction in sales tax revenue and permit and fees and a host of other revenue outside the liquor store, which we think is fairly, doing fairly well. At the local level, if, 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 if it's a great deterioration, we will need state and federal assistance. And that's been something the league has been promoting along with the National League of Cities as well. I think our concern here, and, and, and that clarify or maybe correct me here, is that we probably could fit this in the budget and levy, but our difficulty is, is, is we kind of get squeezed from both ends when we go through this. It's, it wouldn't be a huge levy impact, but there's other impacts, and it's, it, it's always a race to the bottom when we get to, to setting levy. And I hear on a, you know, occasionally that we should be at zero percent. So I think that's our concern, you know, to kind of spread this out, and granted, there's still a tax impact, levy tax impact down the road, we aren't avoiding that. But the interest rates are really good, and there's a way to do it. I, I do respect the opinions of the, of the council however, on how to finance it. One of the reasons this has been promoted is, and I, it's before me, is that the council wanted to have bathrooms as a priority, and I think the schedule of this being done was set by a a prior council saying this is a priority for this, for the city council. So that's why it's, you know, still being pushed, so to speak, and, and on there, but I don't know if that helps explain kind of the financial side or implications of this.
The other point I would add is, you know, we awarded this project over a month ago, so so it's impossible really to to void a contract that's already underway.
And I think that, 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 that obviously is the main point, and the second point is, is that while, I, I mean, I totally respect the concern and, and share the concern about where are we in the next six to twelve months, but the hard thing about government versus balancing the regular businesses, that our decline and our increase or returns are always a year after the private sector, just simply because how the revenues move. So our concern and cautions are going to be reflected in two thousand twenty-one, not in the twenty twenty piece, and that's the hard part for me to always keep my head around, but I do think that, you know, if we're gonna move on a project, we're probably a lot smarter to move this project this year than, than push it to next year, thinking that it would be better to play next year.
Other input as part of this hearing?
Mayor, John De Kramer?
Done.
A question to Annette is this is not a, this would be a bond that we could pay off earlier, I'm assuming, is that correct?
We haven't gotten to that part of the structure yet. This, this specific tax abatement bond will be wrapped in with four other elements to one bond issuance. So potentially, we have in the past structured it so we can pay them off early. However, usually it's not within the first five or six years, but the other components such as maybe the street reconstruction side could potentially, you know, have that, that ability.
I, I think your point on the interest rates and is a very valid one, and that, you know, this really is, if we take it from cash or we take it from a bonding, pay for it either way, you know, we're not causing this much, you know, dollars expenditure. I mean, we just couldn't decide on a forty-some thousand dollar savings on the streets before, so I, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the resolution, approving the property tax abatement to finance the public improvement.
I'll second that.
The motion by John, seconded by Craig, to close the public hearing and for the resolution on the property tax abatement. Discussion on that motion?
Is the motion just to close the hearing then?
Maybe your motion was for both, wasn't it, John?
Yeah, it was, yeah. I mean, it was intended to approve the bond, but yes, we can close the public meeting, and if we can roll it into two, we'll do it as both.
Annette, you want to clarify? Can we, do we need separate motions on that?
Yes, we do. Let's close the meeting first.
John, would you?
Yeah, I'll change my motion to closing the public hearing.
My second will reflect the same.
The motion by John, seconded by Craig to close the public hearing, discussion? If not, Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Stephen Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yeah.
The motion does pass. Now, we'll consider the resolution.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, property tax abatement to finance the public improvements.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Craig, discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Jim?
Go ahead, Steve.
After discussion previously, I think that I can get behind this, given the interest rates and the fact that we are always spending today what's gonna be, how did you say that, Craig? Paid for in two years or next year?
Well, yeah, the money's that, I mean, we're, we're actually spending last year's piece, this year, next year.
Piece, right, right, so, given that, I, I can vote in favor of this.
And Jim, you, we cut you off there.
That's all right. Just, you know, Annette, when she made the comment, she's not sure about finances. As, and I can say it from the private sector, you know, I own a business now that our revenue went from hundred and some thousand a month down to zero. So I, I think at this time, and I know we voted on the approval of the bid four weeks ago, four weeks ago looked completely different than it does now. And I think taking on debt, just to keep going is a, in my, in my personal opinion, is a very bad business practice. So I, I will not be supporting the resolution. I think we should look at our spending because we have a lot of businesses, their revenue went down to absolutely zero in the last four weeks. So, thank you.
And I, I agree with you, Jim, but we've already awarded the bids, so you can't take, you can't take it would be like if you and I had been awarded contracts and all of a sudden somebody's not fulfilling their contract, so I think we have to keep that in mind too, but going forward for bids that we're gonna be awarding in the future, I think we need to take that into consideration.
Councilmember Lozinski, not only did a local contractor get the contract, they've incurred expenses by ordering the materials. They had to get their order in just to be able to get it started this summer. So not only are they at zero, they're below zero right now, so they, we have the obligation to fulfill that contract.
Mr. Mayor, this is Glenn Bearcoller.
Yes, Glenn.
Kyle, could you put that other slide back on as far as the, yeah? Again, we've been, I'm one that likes to pay as you go and not the bonding, but in this particular case, you know, the, the bid has been awarded, we have a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and the question is, are we gonna use a hundred and thirty thousand of our current revenues to, to pay that, and we may need that for other expenditures? Or according to this, we would pay what, twenty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars in years twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six? So, you know, where's the money gonna come from? Are we gonna pay it for it over the next six years? Are we gonna try and come up with a hundred and thirty thousand this year? And again, normally I would, I would like to pay as you go, but I, because of low interest rates, and because we are probably gonna need the hundred and thirty thousand for other expenditures, I, I think this is a good move to go ahead and approve the bonding.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Stephen Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
No.
Jim Lozinski?
No.
So the motion does pass. We'll move then to the, the next and final public hearing in the evening. This is the resolution approving a street reconstruction plan and giving preliminary approval to the issuance of the street reconstruction bonds. Once again, I'll call on Annette Storm for our finance. Annette?
Thank you. So this next public hearing is in regards to the two street reconstructions that we have on the table for this year, South Fourth, which I believe is on the table tonight to be awarded for the contract, and South First Street, which is still up for discussion. The overall tax levy impact for the two projects is estimated to be roughly a hundred and fifty thousand over the next ten years. If the whole one point four million, which is spread out between the two projects, between this assessment piece and surface water, and then any city participation in there. Trying to think, let's see. On, on this one, we do have to have a two-thirds approval for the project. Also, since this, the South First Street is still, hasn't been actually hasn't been let in the eyes of the law, if we were to approve this, this would be the max amount that we can bond for, and if we don't have the authority to, to continue with the South First Street, that would just simply come out, and the amount that would be bonded for would be reduced based on just South Fourth Street need. So I just want to keep that in mind, that the one, the one point four million is the max amount that we will, but there is a good possibility that once we get more final numbers, that this number will come down to reflect the actual costs that will be for those two projects.
Thank you, Annette. Questions? Input as part of the, as part of the public hearing?
On the slide that's up right now, Mayor Burns?
Yes.
The, it says the overall tax impact, tax levy impact for these two projects is estimated hundred and fifty thousand, so I'm wondering where Annette's getting the one point four million. I mean, it makes more sense for the cost.
Go ahead, Annette.
That, that might have just been a clerical error. After I was reading it, I had thought, this is not one point five, it's one point four million that we're that we're looking at. I think at one time we had it at one point five, but the cost came down since then, so I apologize for that error.
Right, but it still says a hundred and fifty thousand versus?
Oh, because that is the, the city's portion for South First Street. So that is the levy impact, sorry, yes. So that would be the amount that will hit the actual levy, and anything else that we're financing would be coming from special assessments or the, the storm water fund for their portion of the projects. There we go, that.
Thank you.
Other input?
I move we close the public hearing.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John, discussion? Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Stephen Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yeah.
And the motion does pass, we'll now consider the resolution that would approve the street reconstruction plan and give preliminary approval to the issuance of the street reconstruction bonds.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the resolution, approving the street reconstruction plan and giving preliminary approval for the issuance of the street reconstruction bonds.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
I will second.
Seconded by John, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Russ Lebat, I have a question for Jason. On every year, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four, we have an amount in there for street, street mill and overlay. Is there a reason we don't have any amount in there for twenty twenty-one? And I know this is, I know this is probably a work in progress and could be changed, but I just thought it was kind of funny that we didn't have a mill and overlay project amount in there for twenty twenty-one.
Jason, I can take this on, and it's possible that I may have hidden that row to get it to fit on a page. I just wanted to show what engineering had, whereas the mill and overlays, we don't bond for anymore. So they, they no longer need to be on there, but it's, it's very possible that it was on there, and there was a shrinking error.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good answer, Annette. I, I'm surprised it's not, I'm sure it's just hidden, so.
Thank you, Annette. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Stephen Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
The motion does pass, thank you. We'll now move then to Agenda I have number seven. This is the South Fourth Street Reconstruction Plan. We have a couple items to take care of here. First would be the resolution declaring the official intent regarding the reimbursement of the expenditures with the proceeds of tax exempt bonds. And then the second would be the resolution accepting the bid and awarding the contract. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. The project is a state aid project for complete reconstruction of- the project is a state aid project for complete reconstruction of South Fourth from Country Club Drive to Elaine. Um, I think we're pretty well versed in this project now, having gone through a few of these processes already, but, uh, it's sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, uh, road replacement, going back same width as it is today, and new five-foot sidewalk on the west side of the street. Uh, April tenth, we opened bids and we did receive three bids, uh, very competitive bids. Um, it was, it was clear they all were bidding the same project. They were all, uh, pretty close for, and, and what we'd like to see. A low bid was RNG Construction of Marshall in the amount of, uh, two million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety cents. That's below engineers estimate by about forty thousand dollars. Uh, this project will be funded by state aid funds, uh, municipal utility funds, water, wastewater, and surface water. And, um, some, some special assessments as well in accordance with our policy. Staff would recommend to, uh, approve this project along with a five percent allowance for contingency and sixteen percent for engineering.
Thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason? If not, I'd entertain a motion on the first action that would be, uh, to, uh, consider the resolution for the declaring the official intent regarding the reimbursement of the expenditures.
So I'll move?
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ, discussion? If not, uh, Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Stephen Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Well, now consider the, um, awarding of the bid for this project, accepting the bid and awarding to the, uh, low bidder, which is RNG Construction of Marshall.
I move the resolution.
Second the motion.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ, discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Steve.
So my only question for Jason is, you know, we've seen a huge drop in petroleum prices. Is that reflected in these bids? And if not, why not?
It is, I'm going to say it's not, um, and I don't know the exact nature of this to give you the, the best possible answer, but I can tell you that there's not a one-to-one relationship between, uh, that price and the pavement price, and you see that all over the state. Um, you would have liked to see better numbers than what we get on Batuminis sometimes, but no, I, I don't think that we get any sort of price break related to that.
But yet, when the prices go up, we see a one-to-one ratio of not even higher.
That may be the case, that may not be the case.
Just to comment on that, I think generally, uh, uh, operations like this, uh, contract early on in the year for a mount on the petroleum, so they're probably locked in with the contract price themselves.
I think that's true. I think there's significant lag in the market.
Other discuss-
Thank you very much.
Yep. Other discussion on the motion? If not, Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Move then to the, uh, next, to the consent agenda. So on the consent agenda this evening is the wastewater treatment facility improvement project, the payment application for Magni, as well as the invoice from Bolton and Mink, the temporary, uh, COVID nineteen employee leave policy, the, uh, consider the addendum towards the National Highway Traffic Safety Grant, consider the approval of an amendment at the farm lease between the City of Marshall, the Lessor, and Mortier Farms in the LSE, as well as the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
I would like number nine, please.
Any other?
Number eight, please.
Any other item? If not, I would entertain a motion for the remaining items on the consent agenda.
Salute.
Motion by Steve, seconded by?
Second.
Russ. Discussion? If not, Kyle, take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
The motion does pass. We'll move to agenda item number eight. This is the wastewater treatment facilities improvement project, the payment applications to Magni, as well as the invoice to Bolton and Mink. Jim?
Jason, but we're about half done with this project, and I see, and this is a good thing, but I see we've had no change orders to date. Is this project going along as smooth as this pay request is reflecting? I hope the answer is yes.
I would say the answer is yes, and I think our wastewater staff would agree. Uh, everything's on time. The contractor is, uh, extremely professional and doing a great job. Um, this contract is a little interesting in that there are some items due to the nature of the work have an allowance to them as opposed to a specific bid. So there have not been change orders, but there has been work within contracted allowance, and everything is going great. And generally on budget and on time, so.
Thank you, Jason.
Perfect, I like it. Thank you.
So Jim, do you want to make the motion? Or I would entertain a motion?
I will make that motion.
I'll second it, hit the mute button. I'll second it, thank you.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim for the payment applications, uh, for Magni and Bolton and Mink. Discussion? If not, Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Lozinski?
Yeah.
Okay, the motion does pass. Agenda item number nine, uh, consider the approval of the temporary COVID nineteen employee leave policies. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I already know the answer, but I just wanted to get a clarification on that second paragraph. It says these policies apply to all city employees, full-time, part-time, and paid-on-call temporary seasonal personnel. That would all, all of our employees who we hire for summer work, say, for example, we, we're, hopefully we open up the pool, uh, park and rec staff, all of those employees would still be covered. Is that correct, Sharon or somebody?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, that's all. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, very good. With that, I would-
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Are you making the motion, Russ, or are you entertaining it? That's usually-
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
The motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number thirteen. This is the conditional use permit for the former hotel, uh, adjacent to City Hall. Um, Sharon, do you want to, want to take this one?
Um, on March eleventh, the Planning Commission heard a conditional use permit application. The applicant was the City of Marshall. This was for development of the hotel next to City Hall. At that Planning Commission meeting, uh, the CUP was denied with concerns over parking. Uh, the ultimate decision for the CUP approval or denial would be the City Council. We brought forward to the City Council on March twenty-fourth, who then tabled to this date and time, uh, here tonight.
So I'm going to interrupt you right now.
Yep.
And because it was tabled, we need to have a motion to remove it from the table and back on the, back on the agenda for discussion. So is there more?
I move removal from the table.
I'll second.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by, um, Steve. Discussion? Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Stephen Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And that motion does pass. My apologies to the council for being out of, uh, out of the agenda order there. So, back to Sharon.
So, uh, following the March twenty-fourth City Council meeting, the City Hall Committee actually met um, on a couple occasions. On March twenty-sixth, they did inspect the, uh, hotel next to City Hall, particularly the roof lines and the, and the light wells, and discovered, and this is previously discovered as well, uh, about water intrusion happening from those locations into City Hall. On April eighth, the City Hall Committee met and reviewed two reports, one from the architect, one from the, the engineering firm that was included in your packet that further expressed, uh, concerns regarding, uh, the hotel next to City Hall. The, for both the architect and the engineering firm, uh, they did state there is a way to save the hotel adjacent to City Hall, however, uh, the cost, uh, to do that, to avoid water intrusion may be a factor. After deliberation by the City Hall Committee on April eighth, the City Hall Committee made a recommendation to the City Council, which is brought to you tonight, to formally withdraw the conditional use permit, being that the city is the applicant and we have the right to withdraw for the development of the hotel for apartments of retail commercial use and, um, direct staff to begin development and specs for demolition of the hotel. And then also, uh, to bring, begin discussions with the architect on the City Hall project with the hotel no longer being there. I believe we do have a discussion set up with Glenn Olson, who is a project, uh, representative on this, um, sometime this week to, to begin those discussions with the architect. Uh, Glenn Olson is here tonight. He can help answer some of the structural specifics and uh, included in the packet where numerous pictures kind of detailing this. So, um, I may, um, have him assist in some of the description, but the, the request before the council is to accept the withdrawal of the recommendation to withdraw the conditional use permit and then to direct staff to, uh, begin discussions with, with the architect.
Questions about the recommendation or input from the City Hall Committee?
I just have a, a quick question here, um, with regard to the, the problems with the old hotel building. Um, are those, uh, problems or defects, would they have been discoverable before we started construction on City Hall? Or because we were doing the construction on City Hall, it opened up some of the walls and we were able to see the defects?
I think the latter is correct, but Glenn, you can address that?
That's correct, Glenn. Uh, I would expect that there wasn't, uh, much to see from the inside of the Marshall Hotel Building concerning the outside wall. And while it's structurally sufficient, uh, or it may be structurally sufficient, it certainly is not, um, usable for an outside wall for either the City Hall wall nor the, uh, the hotel wall. Uh, we had several pictures taken of it, and I hope that you've been able to see those pictures. And it became uh, apparent some of the reasons for why we had an interior water feature on the southeast wall of City Hall. Uh, there was, uh, the, the bricks themselves were dilapidated, deteriorated, falling out. Uh, the siding you can see has been taken off. Uh, the portions of the light area that, uh, reached down to the, the first floor. And most of that wall is rotted away. Uh, so just for a little history too of the, for the public, uh, I know that m- many of the, uh, many of the public have been living here for many years and understand the history behind, uh, the acquisition of the property that started at least nine, ten years ago. And really, the city has worked hard to figure out what was the best thing to do with the building. We really did want to redevelop that building. We really did want to keep that building there for not only historical purposes, but for, uh, new apartments and um, commercial use of the first floor. So when we went, when we brought the issue to the City Hall Committee, uh, we did discuss again all those previous discussions about um, developers that might be interested. We've been working for the last year and a half or so on, uh, working with potential developers and once they really see what the situation is with the building and the difficulties in reconstructing, it becomes, um, an insurmountable cost, um, problem. Now, not that the alternatives are going to be lots cheaper. We had discussed the, uh, s- I'll call it subsidy of private developers with the ideas of, of what it would cost us or might have cost us to demolish it and to do some improvements, uh, within that open area if it was demolished. And so we did even bring those forward as far as a credit to potential developers. And even with that, that was difficult. Now knowing what we do know today, um, the cost would be much more to a developer than initially, uh, we thought. So that's why in the discussion with the City Hall Committee, that this recommendation came forward. It will entail going back to the architect to decide what the design of that outside wall will be and how to reconstruct that. So that hasn't, hasn't started yet. We're waiting for, um, the direction from council. If you have any other questions, I could certainly take them.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. Questions for, for Glenn, and we'll really, uh, like, kind of focus this part of the discussion on the conditional use permit and whether the city should withdraw that request. And then the second part of that will be the next agenda item, whether or not to demolish this building. Glenn? Or any other input?
No, I have nothing at this point, no.
Okay.
All right, I'm, I'm not sure if you're talking. I'm not sure which Glenn you're talking to here, so, sorry.
The, I was actually referring to you. I thought, I thought you were about to say something, so, yep. Um, other, other council members, uh, input questions? If not, is there a, a motion, um, to withdraw the conditional use permit for the development of the hotel?
I'll move. Question, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, that was Russ and Steve?
I'll second it, yep.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Stephen Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski? Jim Lozinski?
Yes. Yes.
He, uh, he said yes, so, uh, that motion does pass. And then the, the next action then as part of this same agenda item, Kyle, if you bring that up on the- item, if Kyle, if you bring that up on the screen. The recommendation number three would be the direct staff to begin the discussions with the architect on the steps necessary for the needed city hall project construction adjustments. Basically as Glenn had described that you're now going to have a wall that would need to be reconstructed differently than what was the original plan.
So move?
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion?
This is Glenn Veracoller. Um, the reason I asked my question before is that I think the, the public's going to wonder why, why we didn't do something about this before, because it, it's going to cause some additional costs for design and construction by changing our plan. And, uh, so I, they may wonder, why didn't we have all our ducks in a row before? And if, if this is, was something that was not discoverable until we started construction, you know, it couldn't be helped. And so I, I think the public should be informed as to what's going on here and why we're changing plans.
That's a very good point, Glenn. Yes.
And, and I'll say that same thing. It was not fully discoverable, uh, prior to this time. And the only time it came really to the front is when we started demolishing the, I'll say the inside wall of the outside wall of the connection be, uh, between city hall and the hotel. So, um, uh, you, you can see how hard staff and the council has worked on this, uh, this building for many years. And that was our intent, but now it's, it's changed.
Well, Glenn?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Steve.
So the only, the only follow-up that I would say to that would be that, um, we've known the disrepair of that hotel for years and every year it got worse and worse and worse. So, uh, there might be some argument that we could have anticipated. There might be some cost and put that in the engineer estimates for the, for the bidding.
And Dennis, you had a?
I, I was going to recall, it's probably been ten or twelve years ago, there was a structural engineers report. As Glenn indicated earlier, it's structurally sound, what was observable at that time. So we knew that there were, you know, what was observable was structurally sound. But now that you get into it, not quite as sound as we thought.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with, uh, both Glenn's and also Councilman Meister. Um, but on the other hand, uh, you know, like Steve said, I think the community has been looking at this eyesore for a long, long time and, and, you know, they've been requesting that the city or someone do something about it. Well, you know, once you start opening things up to remodel, you find all sorts of skeletons in the closet. And I, I think this is exactly what we found. We found skeletons in the basement that was leaking water underneath and we didn't know about. So I think in the long run, I think the public, you know, they'll hold our feet to the fire a little bit. But hopefully in the long run, when they see it developed into something and hopefully something positive that the downtown businesses and the city of Marshall can be proud of, I think we can wipe that egg off of our face.
Other, uh, yes?
Uh, just a, a couple of comments in there too. I think, uh, you know, looking back, you, we've tried a number of times, uh, to preserve a historic building, uh, trying to make use of it as best we can. To me, the real, um, straw that broke the camel's back, so to speak, is the, the fact that we could do some work inside the, uh, city hall to, uh, restrict some of the water from getting inside, but it's gonna, would continue and deteriorate uh, our building more so than, uh, correcting the problem in this case, uh, in the long run. So I think it's been beneficial to us that nobody did try to take this on as a redevelopment. I think, uh, uh, as I looked into it, it was going to be expensive. Like Glenn Olson said, now they're finding out it's very expensive. And, uh, we would have had more difficulties with our building, uh, if somebody did go ahead and do the repair. So I think this is, uh, you know, we tried to save it. It didn't happen. Uh, it can't be done. It's just time to say enough, um, take the building out of there.
And Sharon, you had a comment?
Well, I just want to comment that I think, I think one of the comments you may get from the public is timing. Why, why wouldn't you have thought of this earlier sooner? And Dennis kind of answered a little bit of that with the, the structural report, you know, just kind of going back on this a little bit. The square footage of existing city hall is adequate. We, we, we didn't need to have use of the space where the hotel is located. So that was one consideration. Another consideration was early on, we had a local developer that was interested in it. And this was on the heels of, uh, uh, another development project in Marshall where there wasn't a local developer. And so kind of a, there's always this tug to work with local developers. And, um, you know, we felt pretty good about that, that financially we couldn't make that turn. And then we had another interested party and even with the original local developer interest, you know, one of the concerns about demoing that hotel was there's going to be some work to be done to make that space look, um, look okay. It's, it's not pretty behind that hotel and, um, we're not quite sure how it's going to look with the two buildings, city hall and, and the, and the, and the coffee shop too. So, you know, to, to kind of have a hole, so to speak, on, and Main Street, we really wanted to avoid it, even though the existing hotel didn't look very good either. Um, so I ju- I just wanted to kind of share that too, because I think more than anything, it's going to be timing and why didn't you do this way back when? But, um, it was, um, you know, like a lot of decisions, it's kind of osmosis and you gain information over time and, and, um, you know, that's kind of where we are today. So I just wanted to mention that.
I think the other, the other comment, and you really alluded to this, is, um, the city has given it the best shot to, for a developer to redevelop this project. We've gone through several, uh, interested proposals, none of which, um, turned out to be, uh, doable or feasible. Um, which brings us to the point that we're at today. And if there is, you know, as those of you that have physically or visually viewed it, um, and the committee certainly has, you know, really know that once that wall was removed, when that wall was constructed in nineteen sixty-four to expose then the wall that was at the Marshall Hotel and the sealing up of the windows that were done at that time and the, um, not dealing with the window well drainage adequately at that time. You know, we can look way back to nineteen sixty-four for the root of perhaps some of these issues too. So. Any other discussion on the motion?
Um, Jim Lozinski, I had to. Can you guys hear me now?
We can, yes.
I was, I don't, I had technical difficulties there. I apologize. But, um, coming from a construction standpoint, I don't know what I missed here, but we did, we're looking at that. First of all, I want to clarify Sharon had mentioned it was a foundation problem and it is not. I don't know if that was clarified earlier. Um, and actually Bob, you see nineteen sixty-four, they actually covered up the nineteen twenty-eight wall. I don't know if that was relayed or twenty-four, whenever the original building was built. So, you know, as somebody who's been in construction, looking at this, you know, I know Glenn had asked, could we have seen some of this? No, probably not. But it is, it is, the other building next to us is, is in bad shape. So I think this is a good recommendation.
Thank you, Jim. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, Kyle? Will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Eve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Veracoller?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ La Bat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number fourteen. This would be consider authorization to advertise for bids for the demolition of the structure at three twenty-six West Main Street. This is the very property we were just talking about. Anything additional to add, Glenn?
No.
Additional questions or input the council has?
I would move to, uh, make the motion to authorize to advertise for bids for demolition of said structure at three twenty-six West Main Street.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, on part of the project requirements and conditions, we're going to try and salvage some things, which I think is a good thing, you know, for history purposes. And just in case, uh, I have not been inside the building, but just in case there was anything of historical perspective in the inside of the building that we could take out prior to demolition, you know, to save to, for the museum or city hall, because, you know, I don't know what that would be, but I know we're going to try and save some things. So if not, if it's not, n- nothing salvageable, I'm perfectly fine with the motion.
I'll, I'll tell you the things that we have in the demolition, uh, proposal of salvaging and delivering to a space that the city directs. One is the front sign, of course. Then there's a rear sign that has, uh, hotel. Uh, it's a, it's, i- it's a sign on the side of the rear of the building. And then the wrought iron railings on the front of the building. There's one short set that almost looks like a flower box railing, but there's also a wrought iron railing on the second floor that was for a balcony. And so those are the things that we have so far. If anyone knows of anything else that they want salvaged, that I'd put that in there as well. But those are the things that we have identified so far for salvage.
And there's nothing inside that hasn't been cleared out or is of any value?
No, there's, there's still some junk left in there, but that's all that I'm aware of.
Well, and the only reason I bring that up, I know there's a gentleman by the name of Dan Carroll, who, who took a lot of wood out of the, the old, uh, school building on Fourth Street and as well as Lion Street. Whether he'd be interested in going in there now that there's no asbestos in there, I don't know. But if not, like I said, I'm perfectly fine.
The other thing we do say is that any of the materials, any of, of the things that are there become the property of the demolition contractor. So anyone who wants a brick from the third floor, for instance, can go to the contractor and make arrangements with the, with the demolition contractor. We've done that several times and, and people have done that. They've come to a site to take sidewalk brick out or I, I know in this building, way up on the top, there's some, there's some nice looking brick, uh, in different designs and shapes. So, uh, we, we kind of leave that up to the, uh, contractor to work with whoever wants to do the salvage.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Veracoller?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ La Bat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
The motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number fifteen. This would be the COVID nineteen planning update. Um, Sharon, are you guys start with this or?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, Jim, okay. I wasn't.
Thank you.
Next room. So Jim Marshall, our director of public safety.
You can see I'm here with all my friends, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, first of all, it's nice to see and hear that everybody's doing okay. I'm going to try to be brief and I know your time is valuable here and but I want to give you a quick update and status report of some of the things that we've done in terms of emergency management over the past month. Um, and I'm going to really try to focus this into a couple of different areas. I just want to talk briefly about the situation that we're in. I'd like to talk about the execution of our incident action plan and talk briefly about some of the administrative successes that we've had along the way. And then also talk a little bit about our command structure and some of the communication that we've had since, uh, this pandemic began. And I know I'm being a little bit repetitive, but I want to start by reminding everybody, I think I showed you this at the last meeting, that back in March fifth, city leadership began, you know, our first planned training session related to emergency management and we had general discussion at that time, and Mayor, you participated in this, what our emergency operation center might look like in an emergency. And never, and I'd say never during that discussion, did any of us anticipate alternative events that would, uh, take place within a week and how this emergency would impact all of our lives. Um, and to save time, I don't necessarily need to speak about the COVID nineteen virus. I think we all know where we're at with that today. Um, but I will, however, comment on the mission that was quickly determined and outlined in our incident action plan, which was to protect the health and the safety of the citizens of Marshall. And our plan was quite simple. It was a simple plan and it was to work close with our healthcare provider, Avera, and our Southwest Health and Human Services. And it was to be supportive of them in any way that we could and also be supportive of the health strategies and the mitigation strategies recommended by Homeland Security Emergency Management, as well as the governor's office. Our execution of our incident action plan began with numerous meetings that included Sharon, Mayor Burns, I'm Avera, myself, and also our, the school district at that time. These meetings and that discussion began on March ninth and have continued on pretty much a regular basis since then. Some of the topics and the things that we have covered have included employee safety and availability of personal protective equipment, um, the continuity of operations planning. We've talked about healthcare surge plans. We've talked about enforcement efforts around the governor's executive order and we've also discussed regional alternative care sites. And some of this, uh, maybe Dr. Meister can comment, um, a little bit later. We've talked about mass fatality planning, specifically morgue operations in locations within the city. And, uh, we've coordinated, uh, we've looked at the coordination of a Southwest Minnesota volunteer registration site, which has really been very success, successful. And we've also talked about the importance of staying current on personnel ish, issues related to this pandemic, which Sheila, she's in the other room, I believe, has done a great job in keeping us all of us, not just the administration, but all the city employees up to date on. In addition to these immediate issues that I just talked about is the long-term financial planning for the city that has been on Sharon's and the mayor's radar from the very beginning and just the concern of the financial impact that this is going to have, not just on the city, but all the businesses within the city. So I know that's taken a considerable amount of their time. And maybe just as a quick reminder, um, the mayor declared our local state of emergency on March seventeenth, which was extended by the council on March nineteenth. And that carries through until April thirtieth. So maybe later on here, we might have to discuss what that picture looks like with, uh, possibly extending that. Um, some of the administrative successes of projects or tasks that we've completed to date. Um, I'll briefly talk about some of the ones that I just mentioned, our incident action plan. And that's real, that was really the plan that was driving what we were going to be doing with the supportive role with Avera. Uh, we put our incident action plan, what we call is on the web E O C. It's a web-based site that all emergency managers, managers within the state of Minnesota can see, as well as our state emergency operation center. They can see the different things we're working on and we can update that as, as we go and, and check out some of the tasks we've completed. I talked a little bit about the continuity of operations plan that was specific to this pandemic. And as you know, I think it was our last council meeting where that was approved, but there's a significant amount of time that was put in by Sharon and, and Sheila and myself to bring that up to date. And that's really been a, a great foundation. Again, it gives us some flexibility in terms of management, uh, with our employees specifically and maybe different job assignments in our expectations of, of, of what we have of them. Talked a little bit about the mass fatality planning in the morgue. You know, early on, we realized that we needed to have that c- uh, communication. So I had set up a couple of meetings with our funeral home directors to talk to them about what their capabilities were. And then we had to sit down and ask those questions, what if, what if, um, we have so much of a surge that that can't keep up or if we have, or if they both get sick, what are we going to do? So we knew we had to act aggressively on that and come up with a plan. And we identified some options, everything from, um, uh, refrigerated semi-trailer down to, uh, a fixed, uh, cooler within the city of Marshall. And, uh, we really made progress with that, but last week I had a conversation with Sheriff Wallen and I really felt that that falls under the sheriff's umbrella. When you talk about, and it's probably not what you want to hear, but body management and, and when, uh, there's a death, whether it's at home or in the hospital, it really falls under the sheriff, the coroner and the funeral home director. So last week, the sheriff Wallen had agreed to finish that. So last week, the sheriff Wallen had agreed to finish that project, hopefully through the end. So we have a good, uh, plan in place with that. Just to have some notes here that I want to talk a little bit about, S M S U as well and our communication with them. Um, we initially stepped back to try to identify some of the resources that we have within the city and more specifically from P P E equipment to uh, cots and what that could be useful to supplement Avera and their surge plan. And after looking at the cots, we realized it probably wasn't in the best interest of the patient and definitely wasn't in the best interest of the care provider. So I reached out to S M S U and their posture in this was the same as the cities. And it was, you know, what do you need and what can we do to help? We soon were able to, uh, secure sixty-one dorm beds. We had city staff, our public works, the department went out there and with our parks department, we had ten city employees dismantle um, sixty-one beds, transport them to the hospital and then reassemble them. And they did that within five to six hours. And I've heard nothing but praise from Avera and the burden that took off their plate because that really would have taxed their maintenance and their, their, their people that are trying to stage their hospital for that. So they've been very appreciative of that. Um, just want to talk briefly about our Marshall volunteer site. Early on, and that was another project that we kind of partnered with Avera. We kind of stepped back and said, you know, this is maybe something that we can help you with. And, uh, we had Alex Peterson, um, created a web document and, and he put a link to that on our Facebook page. And within twenty-four hours, we had over a hundred and twenty volunteers with some of those volunteers having some good medical experience in their background. So very grateful for that. And then that, uh, that site could kind of took on a life of its own where there's some other cities that had reached out to us and had asked if they could use that same link. So we've kind of changed the name of it from a Marshall community area volunteer list to our Southwest kind of region volunteer list. And we're hopefully going to encourage people that signed up from those other communities to look within their area to, uh, to help with volunteering. And then maybe one last thing I want to quick comment on with administration is our finance department between the net and and Kyle, they've really been, um, giving us good direction and keeping track of all of our time and the expenses that are going along with this, uh, current emergency in the hopes that FEMA will step up to the plate and supplement some of the expenses that we've covered. And then maybe the last couple of things I want to comment is about our command structure and our communication. You know, our overall command structure with this incident is a little bit different than what we thought because we've really been in a supplemental role to Avera, our hu, our healthcare provider. And Avera, and I'm sure Dr. Meister can, can, um, confirm this is that they activated their incident command system early on in anticipation of this pandemic and what potentially could do to our community. Um, but we felt that it's important to continue that strong communication with Avera. Um, I know the mayor has been part of those discussions. Sharon continues to be part of those discussions as well as Dr. Meister and his, his position as chief, uh, a medical officer for Avera. Recently, we reached out to Councilman Schaefer. Think we all know that he has a strong background when it comes to emergency manager. And I just thought it was going to be a mistake if we didn't utilize some of his skills and things that he can bring to the, the table. He knows the hierarchy that exists within Homeland Security Emergency Management. And he has some key connections that I think have been beneficial and will continue to help us as we work through this, uh, this pandemic. And then regarding communication, I got to say that Mayor Burns continues to play the active role of our, our public information officer. And both the mayor and Dr. Meister have played a critical role in keeping our community informed through their social media posts that they do. And I've heard nothing but great comments from the community and some of our members really look for them for their as a great resource and input that they give to that. And then maybe in closing, I don't want to take all your time tonight, but, uh, council members, if at any time you have questions or if you need clarification or if you need additional details, I I want you to please feel free to reach out to me and ask the questions. I'll try to answer them the best that I can. Um, I'll continue to try to give better updates in our administration brief that we'll do monthly as we work through this. You know, early on, I, I don't think any of us felt time was necessarily on our side. So we've been in a mad sprint up to today and, uh, hopefully we're a little bit more focused. I think the social distancing has bought us a little bit of time and then it's allowed us to plan and prepare. Not that we're fully prepared, but we've had time to process this. And maybe I'll stop there and Mayor, a few, or the council have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
So thank you, Jim. Uh, not only for that, uh, very good presentation, but also for the really important work you're doing. Input from the council and Steve, let me turn to you first.
So, uh, Chief Marshall does a great job and I can't tell you how appreciative we at the hospital are of the city's involvement. I think we really have set the bar high from the cities across Minnesota. And certainly we are ahead of a lot of places. Um, the collaboration and the, um, working relationship that the city has helped with the hospital in this pandemic is just exemplary and, and we are setting the bar really, really high. And I'm just thankful to be working with such a great team. Um, happy to have, uh, Councilmember Schaefer on board now for the aforementioned reasons. His, uh, uh, knowledge and experience with, uh, what would you call them, uh, emergencies is just, uh, invaluable. So I thank everybody and, uh, I know that we at the hospital are very appreciative of the help we're getting. Uh, we could not do this alone. Um, hopefully we are preparing for too much. Um, that's the goal, that we're going to prepare for too much. And, um, you know, everything we do before pandemic is alarmist and everything we do after the pandemic is insufficient. So hopefully we're being alarmist. Um, we'll see.
Thank you, Steve. Other input from the council or questions for Jim? If not, thank you, um, Chief Marshall. We'll move then to, move then to the next agenda item, uh, which is agenda item number sixteen, consider the ratification of the Economic Development Authority Emergency Loan Program. Sharon, are you going to take this?
I can introduce it and we do, uh, also have our economic development director. We started a little earlier than planned around March twenty-third to begin work. We know that the business impact from coronavirus is great. Um, so it's been really nice to have her on board. And Marcia's done a tremendous amount of work with this as well, along with the E D A board and consultation by the city attorney. The E D A board did hold a couple of special meetings on April first and April eighth to discuss an emergency E D A loan to assist businesses related to impacts from coronavirus. Uh, we also are very well aware of the federal programs. It was a direction from the E D A board to take that into consideration. And Lauren can explain some of those specifics. We struggled a little bit with early on, and again, this discussion about an emergency loan program was and Mr. Mayor, you can correct me, but I think shortly thereafter, the, the declaration of the emergency, um, order from you, we talked about initiating some kind of program. And there was a lot of back and forth and research. Uh, one of the considerations was, and, and this is something to think about as we go forward, is uh, the recovery period. Right now, we're, we're, we're obviously being impacted and we're not to that stage, but that is another discussion. I know there's, there's some maybe potential community support from the foundation and also some private businesses who might have some grant availability. And that's something Lauren Dytes is also working on. So I will, uh, uh, turn it over to Lauren Dytes and she can give you some of the specifics of what the E D A board approved on April eighth. Um, and, um, what the council was asked to do tonight is to really ratify the E D A board's intent to use a specific fund. That's why we need to come to the council. So I'll turn it over to Lauren.
Thank you, Sharon. Lauren?
Thanks, Sharon, Mayor Council. Um, Sharon did a great job of explaining kind of the, the process we went through. Uh, this, this did start very early on. Um, we had a lot of discussion about what the program should look like, who we're trying to reach. Um, and you obviously all have access to the application and information. So you have seen what the program looks like, but, um, as a whole, we wanted to take, we decided to take a hundred thousand dollars and make that money available to a bunch of small businesses, um, with five thousand dollar loans. We know that five thousand is not enough for a lot of businesses to, to get themselves out of these difficult times, but we felt as though we could at least pro, provide some bridge money. Um, there are a lot of great programs out there right now, both on the federal and state level. So that's where this discussion, discussion had kind of evolved and changed over the last couple of weeks. Um, originally we felt like we wanted to mostly from a P R standpoint as well, we, we really wanted businesses to know we're here to help them. Um, but we also want to encourage them to seek those other programs first. Um, so if you look at the, the way we formatted the, the program, we are encouraging and actually, uh, for those who do end up applying, they are required to apply for both the federal and state um, loan programs or grants. And that way we're utilizing those dollars that have been set out for these types of purposes versus using our local dollars. Um, but we did want to be available for the businesses who didn't qualify. Uh, the other thing we had to consider and still do is some of the federal and state programs may, and some we have heard possibly already have run out of money. Um, and with that, the backlog of people who've applied for loans, they may not receive uh, the money that they've applied for. Uh, and we really do want to be there to help keep these businesses going and, and open. Um, and as Sharon mentioned, uh, the reason we went with a hundred thousand is so that we also had the ability to possibly help more on the recovery side of, uh, this pandemic. Because we do know businesses, this, this is going to be a, a long-term issue for them. Um, they're going to need help during the emergency and after. So, uh, the way that we had decided we would fund it is through our Fund Two fourteen and that's our revolving loan fund. Uh, those dollars came from a MIF. We had an exemption that we, uh, were able to turn in those dollars and form our own revolving loan fund. Um, looking at the policy, there are, um, some, typically there are some requirements that, to use these dollars. And that's where we're coming to council to be able to utilize these dollars for this program, um, rather than what the typical, uh, what the policy states now. So I'd be happy to answer questions that the council would have.
Thank, and thank you, Lauren. Um, John De Kramer and Steve Meister are, are representatives on the E D A. Do either of you have anything additional?
I do not. Okay, I'll just jump in and say, uh, uh, that I know Lauren and Marcia have put in an awful lot of time on this and they've um, I think came out with a very good program. The idea here is, uh, you know, we know there's going to be businesses that are going to fall through the, both the federal and the state, uh, safety nets. And we're trying to be there. We know a hundred thousand for as many businesses as we have is not a large sum of money. But we're trying to help out the, the small businesses that, uh, really are probably not going to qualify for other programs and, uh, really reserve it for that. So it's kind of the intent of what we're going after.
Thank you, John. Questions from the council?
Um, Mr. Mayor, this is Glenn Bear Coler and, uh, I noticed that the loans are going to be awarded not on a first come, first served basis, but on a priority set by the Marshall E D A. Could you explain a little bit about the priorities that are being set by the Marshall E D A?
Yeah, um, so we originally were going to do a first come, first served basis. Uh, but we didn't want to feel like we were exhausting all of the funds right away. Um, so with that, we decided that our main priority were the small businesses. So really the only preference we have outside of the requirements for the businesses is we prefer the two to four full-time employee equivalents. So that just gave us grounds to be able to, um, award those businesses that are on the smaller side.
Does that answer your question, Glenn? Other?
Okay, I, I guess I was muted there. So there's not like a list or, um, some criteria lists that were, you judge them on their loan applications and, and, uh, award them points or anything like that. It's?
No, we, we had discussed going that route. Um, we don't anticipate having that many, um, applicants at this point. We've actually had one business reach out and hopefully more do, uh, in the coming weeks. But, uh, we just, like I said, we didn't want to have all the funds be exhausted right away. So we wanted the ability to be able to receive several applications before we started awarding funds.
Any other questions for the council?
Um, Jim Lozinski here. I, I do have a question. Uh, it states in here that this is not available to businesses that receive or qualify for, um, the paycheck protection program. That would eliminate all businesses between two and four full-time employees because they all qualify for PPP.
They do all qualify, but not every-
Should be clarified?
Um, well, and those requirements have changed since this program started. Uh, not everybody was eligible when we wrote this. Um, but we are under the understanding that the PPP will likely run out. Um, so it's for those businesses that apply and don't receive funds. So even if they're eligible, if they aren't receiving the money, they would still be eligible for our program.
Okay. And the other thing is that I was looking through this and, and, and it's great that we're doing this. But I think everybody keeps overlooking the sole proprietor or the home business. And I'm going to use home, um, hair salons. They, they, those folks are, and all these programs are getting overlooked. And is there a way to tweak the program to maybe include those folks?
Yeah, um, and we discussed that. You know, like I said, we went back and forth on this discussion a lot. Um, we, we wanted to be able to impact the businesses who had the greatest impact on the community as a whole. And not saying that hairdressers do not, they're definitely very important to our community. Um, it's a discussion we could have with our board to see if that's the route we want to go. Um, we just kind of followed the guidelines that other communities have put together and how other loan programs were put together. Um, and, and like hair salon is a great, great example because they are listed in the executive order. So it's definitely a discussion that could be had.
Lauren, it is a preference. Let me just say that it is a preference. It's not a qualification. And then let me also just say too, that the federal government, the S B, and Jim knows this very well, the S B A continually makes changes. I think it's almost on a daily basis. Some of it is, um, some hurdles that they've gone through to refine their, their programs and their application process. So you know, we, we hope that the, we can meet the intent of the E D A board and hopefully with the city council's approval of the use of the fund, which it has a lot of latitude according to the, the statute and the guidance we've received from deed. Um, we hope we, we can meet that intent too. Um, but yeah, there's, every day there's something, there's something new and, and we learn more and our local lenders know more. I know that, uh, Lauren, along with local lenders, did a webinar, um, because we really got to work hand in hand with, with the banks, uh, with our partners on S B A. We don't want to come into a situation where we put them at a disadvantage for S B A. Right now, it, it's, if there is funding the S B A programs are probably more beneficial than this particular program. And then, um, you know, we can go down the line and say for each business, you know, for, it may not work for them. Uh, I know some businesses have commented that a loan may, may be an anchor, um, to them and they're already swimming or drowning from what they're currently in. So but obviously we meet again tomorrow as an E D A board and, and, you know, Lauren hasn't gotten a lot of applications to date. We can come back at the next meeting in the following month and, and see what we need to do to, to make it work.
Other input from the council?
Jim Lozinski here again, and, and I don't necessarily think we need to come back, Sharon. I, I think as a council, and I'll get to the end here. Should, um, move forward at this and, and because businesses don't want to wait another two weeks. I would say strong, S B A is, is I would say strong, SBA is, is, I can attest is a nightmare to work with right now. I had to send a loan through at three in the morning, finally get to go through. But strongly encourage the private business for the P, businesses for the PPP loan. It's a simple, one-page application. The bank sends it in and they actually are funding those loans, um, as we speak. And that is the, you know, for two to four full-time employees or more, up to five hundred. Encourage all Marshall businesses to do that because that is a very good, very simple program to help out. But I would like to, with that being said, I would like to make a motion that we approve this and let the EDA Board tweak it as they see fit.
Motion by Jim. Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, uh, Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steven Meister?
Yes.
I'm Bear Kohler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And motion does pass. We'll move then, thank you, Lauren. We'll move to, to Agenda I of number seventeen. This is Trunk Highway sixty-eight, the ultra-thin bond wear course project. We have a resolution approving no parking, which was requested by Mindot along this portion of Trunk Highway sixty-eight. Jason Anderson, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as I mentioned, this is Trunk Highway sixty-eight from Tony's Depot at the intersection with US fifty-nine, going out to the northwest to the bridge at the diversion channel. Uh, in twenty twenty-two, Mindot's planning an ultra-thin bonded wear course project. That's a, it's a thin mill and overlay project similar to what they did on College Drive a few years back. In concurrence with that project, they're asking if the city council would approve a resolution to remove parking from that stretch of the highway. Uh, the purpose of removing parking would be to allow them to have the space to stripe it with a continuous center turn lane. They believe that it'll make for a more, uh, a, a better corridor through Marshall, a more continuous corridor with continuity. Because from Highway twenty-three all the way to this bridge, then you'll have a, a center turn lane provided along their route. So that, that's what they're looking to do. Um, and to do so, they asked for us to pass a resolution to remove parking. I would note that on that first block in particular, between uh, fifty-nine and Tenth Street, there are residences on both sides and there is, uh, some parking that does occur there today. On the flip side to that, they all have very long driveways and they have the ability to park off-street as well. The downside is a lot of them are single width and then you end up having to stack vehicles in there. So, uh, we did bring this forward to PIT on February sixth, and I think the committee was generally supportive of this treatment. So I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Jason. Questions?
Jason, just a question, uh, sorry, Steve. Jason, just a question, were any of the residents notified of this yet?
We have not, we have not notified the residents. We, no, not at all.
At what point are they, or is input taken from them?
I don't believe you need to take input, but I think you could if you desired to.
Okay, thank you.
Steve?
So Jason, how long do they anticipate this project to take?
It's a, it's a mill and overlay project. They, they goes very fast. Just a, a grinding of the surface and a reapplication of a, a new surface treatment. It's not a long process at all, so.
So specifically a week, a day, a month?
Probably a day, but two, and then the painting and striping after that.
But the, if your question is how long will the no parking, that would be permanent?
Permanent no parking. That's the, the, they're asking for permanent no parking. You'll see the diagram there and you have to kind of zoom in if you've got it at your computer because it's a large print. But that's, that's what they're proposing for a striping pattern. They're proposing no parking with a wide, uh, paved shoulder, six and a half feet measured to, I think, the back of the curb. But it might be the face of the curb. So a widened shoulder with no parking.
Glenn, you had a question?
Yes, I, I talked to Jason this afternoon regarding this matter and I, I feel that we should notify the property owners, the, the homeowners, the business owners regarding this proposal and get a little input from them. It's going to affect them and, and I'd like to know what they think of this project.
Is there a, um, any immediacy on action, Jason?
I don't think there is immediacy of action. We don't need to act tonight. They would like some sort of word from us sooner than later so they can continue with the design of their process and their project and go through their process. So I would say if, if the council wishes to delay this and try to seek some input, you have time.
Okay. With that in mind, is it a desire of the council to table this?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. We table this and, uh, we try and correspond with the, uh, residents and business owners along the, along the stretch.
I would second that motion. I feel that, uh, it's a state highway, so I think the state has, uh, the best interest in actually the overall jurisdiction of it. But I think we need to at least let the, uh, homeowners along that boulevard know.
And this is consistent with the, uh, as this turns into East Main Street?
Yes, it was. Yes. Other, uh, discussion on the motion, the motion is to table?
Mr. Mayor, can I just comment? And I know it's not absolute, but I go down this street a lot. I do not see a lot of parking on this, on this section of the street. And again, it's not absolute. It, it does happen. I, I notice it more when they don't move their car for snow removal. That is when I do notice parking. It does occasionally happen, but there's not a lot of parking on this, on this section. I just want to add that.
Yeah, there's, there's really, and I, I agree, there's one business that's, uh, on the, you know, on the more, uh, westerly end of that, that, that does occasionally use some on-street parking. And then when the, uh, uh, mosque was there, they, you know, they, when they were, uh, worshiping, there was substantial street, on-street parking. But since the mosque relocated, um, I actually travel that route fairly often and, and it's, uh, very infrequent now that there's vehicles parked there.
Any other discussion on the motion to table? So this will be table until our next regular council meeting. The, Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steven Meister?
Yes.
I'm Bear Kohler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
James, James Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda I of number eighteen. This is the Han Road Sewer Reconstruction. We have a change order to consider as well as the acknowledgement of the final pay request. So this was also, this change order, uh, results in a, um, reduction of the contracted amount. Any questions about this change order?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steven Meister?
Yes.
I'm Bear Kohler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
The motion does pass. We'll move then to, uh, Agenda I of number nineteen, consider appointments to various boards and commissions uh, based on the, uh, applicants as well as, uh, my review as well as a review of the, uh, liaisons to these various boards and commissions. I recommend the following people be, uh, appointed, um, first to the Community Service Board where there are five openings that Renee Subey be appointed, um, to a second term that would end February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Tom Boland be appointed to a second term that would end February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. That Molly Wagner be appointed to a new term, her first term, again to end February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. And that Sue Versable be appointed to a term that, uh, will expire, um, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. That Jeff Holcomb be appointed to a second term on the Marshall Municipal Utilities Commission. And that, uh, that Andrew Subey, uh, be appointed to the Merit Center Commission. I offer that as a recommendation and entertain a motion to affirm.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, all in favor, or Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steven Meister?
Yes.
I'm Bear Kohler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
The motion does pass. Uh, Commission Board Liaison Reports, uh, from my report, the, uh, revolving loan, or excuse me, the Southwest Regional Development Commission, uh, did meet by Zoom this past, um, past week. Um, an update was provided from all of the government entities within southwest Minnesota as far as, uh, um, what their plans are related to the current, uh, uh, emergency situation. Uh, a component of the, uh, Southwest Regional Development Commission is the revolving loan fund, which is a one-point-one-million-dollar, uh, fund. Um, currently, I do chair that, that, uh, revolving loan fund. And the, um, action of the revolving loan fund committee, and it was ratified by the Southwest Regional Development Commission, or will be ratified by the full commission, and is to, um, defer if the businesses, uh, request, uh, any principal payments for the next ninety days, uh, to be revisited after that. All in the effort to assist the, um, the loan clients that are also small businesses. So with that, um, Craig?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
And, um, I gotta remember who's in what order. Uh, Steve?
So EDA Board did meet. I was, uh, occupied with COVID stuff at the hospital. So I'll refer the discussion to John, but mostly it revolved around the loan fund. I do know that. Um, Community Services Board did not meet. Um, Cable Commission did not meet.
And Glenn?
The, uh, Public Housing Commission, uh, canceled its meeting for this month because of the, the virus situation. A Planning Commission meets tomorrow. And that's it.
And John?
John? Okay, EDA, uh, did meet as discussed and we took action on that tonight. Uh, most of it was centered around the, uh, the loan program. Uh, we do have an EDA meeting tomorrow and, uh, which is our regular meeting. And then there will also be a special meeting on April thirtieth, so, uh, to take some action on sale of some lots. Uh, regarding MMU, uh, they do not meet until next week. And a reminder that, uh, you're invited to listen in on that, uh, primarily with the audit reports. Uh, they'll be presenting the audit at the next, uh, meeting, uh, um, next Tuesday. And, uh, you should all be getting the, you know, Zoom information for doing that. It's one of the first times they'll be doing a Zoom meeting, so. Um, last thing on that, just, uh, an update, uh, we received information on, uh, six applicants that, uh, been, uh, sorted down to six remaining applicants for the general manager. Uh, that will be reviewed and, and the, uh, commission will be deciding on which of those to, um, bring in for further interviewing. Uh, just looking briefly at the selection of the six, uh, some very impressive individuals in there. So I think we've got some good choices to make, some, and some tough choices to make.
Thank you, John.
That's it.
Us? Russ, I believe you're muted.
Sorry, uh, Library Board met last night and, uh, we took up the primary focus of the meeting was the, uh, library's response to the COVID nineteen. And, and there's, Michelle and her staff are doing a wonderful job of adjusting like, uh, almost on a daily basis of what they're doing and how they're handling, uh, the patrons coming in to pick up stuff and they're actually delivering materials. So my hat is off to them for, for making changes like all of us are doing on a daily basis. So, uh, Police Advisory Board did not meet and Convention and Visitors Bureau met, uh, last week in a special meeting and welcomed our new director, Cassie Weiss, and we will meet again tomorrow at our regular meeting. That's all I have. Thank you.
And Jim?
Um, I have nothing.
Okay, then we'll move then to, um, council member individual items and Jim, let's, uh, start on your end. We'll come back to Jim. Uh, Russ?
I have nothing.
Um, John?
Uh, just a big thank you to everyone, city staff and all the work that's been going on, uh, the updates and everything else. Um, greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, echo what John said. I, my hat's off to the city staff and all the work that they've done. Um, absolutely amazing. And I, I don't even want to start naming names because I'm going to just forget too many important people. But I want to especially thank Mayor Byrne, um, Sharon, Jim Marshall, Alex, I know how hard he's worked. Uh, Jasmine, um, I know that Sheila's done a ton of work, uh, working with, with staff and all the changes and just all of our staff. I see the, the chipping in and, and it's that get it done and dig in attitude. Our, our Public Works and, and Parks Department for their assistance to Avera. But, um, looking at the leadership that, that Jim has provided in our, in our command staff that have been working out there, keeping our, our Emergency Operations Center going and all those additional roles. And it's not just been for the community of Marshall. It's been for the whole region and, and, and assisting with, uh, things with Lyon County and with Southwest Health and Human Services and, and keeping that together with Avera and all the other pieces. Uh, I am seriously proud to be, uh, to be a part of the community here in Marshall and to see, um, how Marshall, all the businesses, all of the organizations and individuals have stepped up to, uh, to really show our place here um, as Minnesotans and, and supporting this whole effort. I just, my hat's off and I am just absolutely so proud to, to say that I'm from Marshall and that, that, uh, we have all these people doing all these wonderful things. It is, it is extremely, uh, moving and I just have so much pride in what I see happening here. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Craig. Steve?
Yeah, I, uh, I reflect what, uh, Councilmember Schaefer said, you know, it's just a sense of pride. I think that we all need to wear our new Marshall gear and, um, put Marshall Proud on there. It's just awesome. That's all.
And thank you, Steve, for your, your efforts in communicating and, um, helping with the community. Did you want to talk about the, um, Somali community donation at all or, or should we?
Sure, I can, well, that's up to you. I can certainly bring it up.
Go ahead.
So the Somali community, um, unexpectedly, graciously, um, has decided to bequeath the City of Marshall with a three-thousand-dollar gift to use, uh, and I quote, "in whatever way we see fit," uh, to help with this COVID nineteen. And I was just, um, brought to the point of tears, uh, with that gift. I think, uh, I was honored and humbled and, um, you know, diversity is a good thing. And when you get to meet the people that you meet in your community, um, you realize how good your neighbors are and it's just another great reason. I'm glad, um, that we moved to Marshall fifteen years ago. It's just awesome. Couldn't be a better place. And we thank the Somali community.
So Steve and I will be, uh, uh, meeting with, uh, a, a small group of representatives of that community uh, tomorrow afternoon to receive that, that payment. And again, it was, uh, unexpected, uh, extremely, uh, gracious and their note, which, um, you know, if it hasn't been shared, we should share it with the council, was, was extremely gracious. So, uh, this was the community also that, uh, Steve and I, uh, participated in a conference call with them that Steve had reported on in our last, last, um, meeting. Uh, that was extremely well-attended and, uh, it was really great questions, great discussions, so very impressive. And so this- And so this three-thousand dollars really represents from that, that community right around a hundred people that ended up chipping in and, and want to say thank you to the city. So again, very nice.
Do, do you want me to read that note, Mayor Burns? I have it right up here.
That'd be great. I don't, I don't think I could, so go ahead.
Good evening. Dear Mr. Mayor Burns and Dr. Meister, as we all battle COVID-nineteen, our Somali community in Marshall have come together and asked ourselves, what can we do as citizens of this great City of Marshall we all love and call home? Over one-hundred members of our Somali community members in Marshall have responded to this call and have donated three-thousand dollars to our City of Marshall. We would like to be an example for the whole Marshall community, especially new immigrants in times of hardship, that we all need to come together and help each other in any way we can, because we are all in this together. Mr. Mayor and Dr. Steve Meister and the rest of our city council members, this money is at your discretion, and you are free to put this money to use where it is needed the most at this time. We will present cashier's checks payable to the City of Marshall. We are ten committee members representing Somali community in Marshall who will represent or present the cashier's check to you. Tomorrow, I will be contacting one of the printing companies in Marshall, so they can help us print a bigger check for presentation purposes. Once this is done, then we are ready to present the funds to the City of Marshall. I will email when we are ready to go, and that was arranged, as Mayor Byrne said, for tomorrow. So we thank Mohammed Ahmed, the Somali community leader, and the Somali community as a whole. This is just humbling.
So thank you, Steve. Glenn?
I have nothing.
Uh, Jim, let's circle back with you.
Um, the only thing I have to add, sorry about that. I'm still figuring out the technology here. I would like to stop and thank all the essential workers, we think, or city staff, but that, the grocery stores, the gas stations, who go to work every day. You know, the, the healthcare workers, the C N As down to the janitors at the hospital. They're going to work every day. For those of us who are at home, so just to thank them for going to work every day in this crisis. Um, and then on the other side, we always like to look for good news in crisis. On a personal note, it, about eight months ago, I was diagnosed with cancer. I had a follow-up checkup today, and as of today, I'm now cancer-free. I just want to share that. I think it's very positive, very positive for me, anyway. So I appreciate that, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Woo-hoo! Congratulations!
Thank you. Um, with that, the, I almost hate to, it was such good news, I hate to even mention my next part. The, but we have talked about in this meeting about the uncertainty of finances moving forward. We're probably going to have to make some tough decisions, and one of those decisions might start with us. So one of the things I would like the council to consider is that the ten percent reduction in the mayor's salary and council member's salary for the remainder of twenty twenty. I know I'm throwing that out as an idea. We haven't discussed it, but it's something for us to think about. And we can probably discuss it further at our next meeting, unless the council's ready to endorse that idea yet this evening.
I absolutely support it.
I never ran for city council for the money, so it doesn't make a difference to me.
I agree.
Any other? With, Glenn, did you have some?
Oh, I, I support it, yes.
The, I was telling Sharon in an earlier conversation, when I first ran for council in eighty-six, the mayor at that time, Bob Schlegel, said, if anyone's doing this for the money, they're not very good at math. So the, with that, if someone would want to make that a motion?
I'd make the motion to, that the council members and the mayor all take a ten percent reduction in their salary from effective with our next paychecks to the end of the year.
I second that.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Ron Baricola?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
The motion does pass. With that, we'll move to staff reports. Sharon?
Uh, I'll keep it very brief. I do want to follow up on Craig's comments on the COVID response. It really means a lot to get feedback from the council. We are inspired by each other, but it is emotional and takes a lot of time. So it's, it is really good to get feedback from the council and get support. I also want to mention that Avera has done a really fantastic job on leading us, as well as us supporting them, but they've, they've done a phenomenal job of, of kind of making us step forward. Obviously, it's all for good, good reasons, but I'm, I'm really grateful to them, too. We know that this virus knows no boundaries. Each day, we get reports on a county-by-county basis. But Avera does not operate on a city or county line. They do cover the region. And so for us to provide support to them more on a regional basis, because we are a regional center, I think is just a really good testament to the city and, and Avera, leading us. And I, Dr. Meister has been really great with some of the medical perspective and then data. I know that I've been kind of a data person to the frustration of some, but it's, it's really good to get that communication back and forth. And let me just briefly say to Mary Martins, who's got a really difficult job, and I probably speak for a lot of people when I say we do not want to disappoint Mary Martins. And it, it isn't about her, really. We know that in her capacity, she doesn't want to disappoint the community. So that's why we, we try to meet expectations coming from her. She, she really represents the region and the community very well. So I wanted to add those comments about our response. And then I do want to comment briefly. Today, we issued a press release on our new website. It was a long time coming. Alex Peterson led this for the city, because we really, we don't have an internal I T person, and, and so Alex fills that role. And he's done a tremendous amount of work. There was a lot of data on the old website. It needed a tremendous amount of cleaning up. The new website isn't pristine. We still want to make some, some upgrades yet. Some better information on there. But it is easier to navigate. It's got a really refreshing look to it. It's got the new brand. And I do want to state that the council members, maybe more so Councilmember De Kramer, has, has stated to staff the direction to find a way for citizens to report concerns or issues on a, on a really easy basis. So we actually have that link on the new website now. You don't have to make a phone call. You don't have to see anybody. You can go to the website, and I think the icon is "Report a Concern." I don't know if that's the language we want to use, because it may come off negative, but it's the best we came up with. And, and we'll try to promote that a little bit, too. Probably, likely, it's more prevalent on concerns when we get around snow removal and, and sidewalks and things like that. But who knows? Maybe we'll get, we'll get compliments from that, from that particular link as well. But I wanted to report that back to the council, and that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Sharon.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes. Craig?
I apologize. If I could just break in for just a second here and add to what Sharon just said. I wish everybody could get a peek at Avera's organization and be a fly on the wall to what they're doing on a, on a twenty-four-seven basis. But I've had the privilege of being able to play a liaison role and spend some time on their daily incident command briefings. And all of the people in the region can be proud and comforted with the, with the degree of planning, preparation, and foresight that they're putting into this. We're in really good hands.
Thank you, Craig, for bringing that up. Any other questions or input for Sharon? If not, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Just touch on the fact that I had a phone call with MINDOT today, and they are working on what they call a demonstration project for College Drive at the Grace Life Church School area. As a lot of you know, we've got a funded project for twenty twenty-two for our R F B push-button crossing treatments, and that's one location that we're planning to do that at. And in coordination with that, as well as the twenty twenty-five College Drive planning, they want to vet what it would look like to have a median treatment in the center at a crossing location at that school. So they want to do what they call a demonstration project, where they paint out the median in the center, then they use delineators, temporary delineators, to set up to mimic an island and see how that might work in one or more different locations on that block. So I see no reason why the city wouldn't be supportive of that, but I just wanted you to be aware of that. And if you have any concerns or comments, you can certainly let me know. And lastly, we did offer a position for a new assistant city engineer. We would expect him to start within the next two weeks, and I'll probably bring him by for an introduction at some point in the future.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason? If not, Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor Council. I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. The remaining items on the agenda include the administrative brief, which is there for your information, as well as the information items. Any comments on those? If not, that you have the listing of the upcoming meetings. Is there anything else to come forward this evening? If not, I'll declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.